One state, under God, one and indivisible.
And the public forum today, Mr. Jeffrey Anderson.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here to say y'all, most of y'all know my name is Jeffrey Anderson. I'm with the Friday Community Center and other things. But first off, I want to thank y'all. Y'all have the most thankless job and very good witness to my life. I've witnessed what y'all have gone through the last year. No one deserved what y'all been put through. Thank you for what you do for our county. Y'all, I've told somebody personally what I feel. I'll tell all of you. Y'all don't deserve what's happened to y'all over y'all trying to do what y'all can for a county with what you have to do it with. If we were, if we were a big high powered county, this would be an easy job. Y'all have a tough job. Thank you for what you do. And I want to thank y'all for your support toward our community and our, our community center in the past. And we all were there yesterday at dinner with us. Uh, we did make a little money to maintain our old building. We got enough for, pay for our new handicap rent we put in such as that. Um, but, and the money y'all put together for our fire department. Thank you. The building's almost completed. But that's going to lead me to why I'm here for. I'm here for asking about general liability coverage on these buildings. You know, is, I don't know, ignorance three years ago, I asked y'all a question, y'all did some research and put something, there's some policy on our building. But I understand it doesn't cover any people. And I need to know, is there anything of what we're supposed to, what do the other community centers do to ensure their buildings for an injury from someone falling, slipping, or whatever? Uh, I don't know what the others do. I assumed a lot of things when I took this job over because my parents passed away and I was given this job to do. And I'm doing the best I can. But is there, or will there be general liability policy that would protect an injury? And would it protect the officers and administrators of the building? Nineteen ninety-three, Trinity County signed that building over to us to use. Y'all own it. But I have the paperwork nineteen ninety-three. It says that it's ours to maintain. We have a power of attorney over the building. But it belongs to the county. And does the county have an insurance policy that would cover someone falling and suing me? Cause I don't have any liability insurance. I'm a retired teacher. I don't have the funds to go fight a lawyer. I asked a lawyer the other day and he said, be, be defending myself. It'd be lucky to be doing surgery on myself. It makes no sense. So if we were sued, I would have to hire an attorney. Well, I have five people on the board that all say, none of us have funds to fight a lawsuit. So overall, they're concerned when we find out that there is no law that, that may not be any. I'm going to ask if there's not, can y'all direct us, how, you know, the county help us, whatever? Y'all are great to our community. We, we're doing the best we can to help our old community out there. But a liability insurance policy, if they're, a big one for a bunch of buildings will be cheaper than us trying to, than somebody try to buy one for our hundred something year old building. And plus, we have the new fire department going in, already built. Thank you. We're going to have to door, are we going to have to buy an insurance policy to cover general liability in that building? That's what we need to know, cause we don't know. And y'all have the means to find the answers and y'all have the means to get something together and help us if you can. Thank you again for your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. May I make a statement? Usually on a general liability insurance policy, there is a clause or you can add an amendment to it to cover anybody. I, I know, for example, at, at my church I have, we have a part of our clause in there. If anybody falls and gets hurt, tries to sue, that we're covered up to a million dollars or whatever it is. But it was added to the general policy. I think you can add. What we need to check, do you girls have the means to check about the insurance on buildings?
So that would not be asked.
That's Rebecca. Rebecca and I have talked about this and it's actually, you know, what Mr. Anderson's talking about is, uh, number fourteen right here. Uh, discussing act on extending insurance coverage to board members and volunteers on county owned properties. Right? So right now, uh, from what our research is, county employees are covered, right? But these people that, uh, volunteer their time to run these buildings that are actually owned by the county, like the Friday building is, and I think Pennington is as well. Is that right?
Yeah.
They're not covered specifically, right? So they're doing most of the work and they're, they're exposed. I, you would think they'd go after the county and that's probably what they would do, but these people also don't need to have this worry. If they're already giving their time, they should be confident that the county's got the bag.
Colton, we do have fire insurance and stuff like that on the building, right?
We do, we do.
But there's nothing on the liability.
We did have liability, but it's only for county employees and like somebody trips involved while they're out there and they're inside of the building. Yes. So we're talking about somebody if they, they die out there or.
So have we done some checking with TAC to see?
We have.
We can extend it to board members and volunteers and things like that, uh, which is what you're asking. It's to extend this liability coverage. So I guess the incident you'd be worried about, you know, that handicap ramp y'all put up there, say somebody, if something happens and it malfunctions, they would sue the county, they would sue the Friday Community Center, and they would sue Jeffrey Anderson personally, right? We don't want that. We want everybody to be covered.
Absolutely. Right.
So you're, you're saying volunteers and board members, but what like yesterday, you're, you're ducking dinner. What about if any, not a board member or volunteer, they come up there to eat? Would that cover them?
Well, they would be the person to sue, right? They'd be the person that'd be injured. It'd be anybody that could potentially be liable for the maintenance or preparation of the building. They could say, hey, you should have done a better job with that board. That was a little rickety or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I thought why? That's our property too, but that is y'all's building.
Yeah, the fair board's building, yes. Um, so we carry separate contracts for those three days because we just hugely carry it.
Same thing with the baseball. They, they get, they get liability insurance as well during baseball season.
The building in Pennington also, right?
Yes, the community center in Pennington is ours.
Yes.
Uh, I think we need to, to give Rebecca and Orin Colton to give with the insurance and get their options and bring it back to us.
That's, that's kind of what we're asking today. It's just, do we have the, the go ahead, you go and get some hard numbers you bring back to the court to cover the, the volunteers and board members?
We'll wait till we get to the.
Yeah.
Okay. Just, just a simple thing.
Yeah.
We're looking for the people that signed the paperwork. Our, all our volunteers, I know they can't go get somebody who was there moving chairs. But those of us who are on the, the board of directors, the, that was established to run the building, the officers, that are on all bank accounts, my name's on everything in that building. And I'm the one who, I have a reason to be concerned because if there's not much to take, then I don't have any money, but I don't want to have to fight a lawyer, I mean buy a lawyer, rent one, whatever.
Yeah, right.
Anyway, that's what it's not, it's not a big point. We know the board of directors is who we're asking.
That's very good, dude.
We know, we know. We hope you did that.
Let's go, Judge. That's a.
Oh, that's awesome.
We're on, we're on.
Here we go. Generally, generally, if you have liability, our coverage on your building, you got a general liability goes on with. I mean, that's in normal world. I don't know about government, but you know, you know, I, I've got a policy separate from my own general liability. And I've got a voids in London that picks up from a million dollars up. And I know that's capable of getting stuff like that for upper lending stuff. But you know, for him getting his lawyers, I might represent him, I think.
They didn't want to rent it.
He wants to rent it. He wants to give it back. He wants to give it back.
My dad always says, all their damage, all their money. Okay. Number four, free limit for October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, ready to session.
Your other idea too, I didn't see a discrepancy, so, so move us a doctor.
A second.
Judge, can I add something real quick, just to cover some confusion that might? This is from the open meeting act. It says in the commissioner, Texas Commissioner's Court votes must be verbal and clearly recorded in the minutes to comply with the state's open meetings act. This ensures that all officials' actions are transparent and accessible to the public. So there was some question on whether you have to vote, or I have to hear you vote, or I have to record the vote. And I think that might clear that up.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No, we just want to be fair to everybody on the board. And if one of these other commissioners don't vote on something, it needs to be recorded like it is when I don't vote on something. I sat on my two feet, so let's go with it.
Okay.
Got you right there.
I'm a client, discussing act on official bonds.
I think this is just a, a date.
I mean, I do, I'm making a motion to approve.
Yeah, just your own side.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move it. Number six, discussing approval on personal, I mean, number seven, discussing act on approval and complete check resolution.
I was personally.
No, we have.
Number six.
Number six.
Discussing act on approval of personal action.
So move it.
I said.
One, one retired.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I, can I make a statement here?
Yes.
Uh, this is going really cut short. That JP officer there just had an award and found it. Have you had any applicants to, to fill this position yet?
I'd like to wait until the next JP, the next one, let them pick.
That'll work for me then. Right.
Appreciate you.
Did you, did you?
There all that.
Did you feel like you're going to have a phone right now? But we're, we're small. I'm going to see about maybe getting an attempt through, uh, workforce.
Okay.
They'll answer phones, follow.
Well, she ought to be able to answer that. She can get them.
Okay. See, we do appreciate it very much.
I was saying that.
You did?
Yes.
I'll leave.
Aye.
Let me say, discussing act approval and complete check resolution, October twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five.
Good morning.
Morning. Good.
So you can see for the month of October, uh, we have a grant total of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-one cents. This includes all payroll, fringe benefits, and vendor invoice claims. Our vendor invoice total was only a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and three dollars and ninety-three cents of that. So that put our payroll part at five hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. But we had three payrolls in October, and with it being the first month of the fiscal year, all the pay was increased with the approved one and a half zip increase. So that did make that a little higher.
Does anybody have any questions? I'm going to push one through.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, discussing act of approval on budget amendments.
We do have one budget amendment that's going to be validated for fiscal year twenty-five. Back in July, we had, uh, two deposits from the comptroller for the jail essential grant program. We did get one of the larger ones received in, but we missed a smaller one, the six thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. So we did a budget amendment to increase the budget revenue side and the expense side of that budget to include those funds.
You said six thousand?
Yeah, it ended up only being the six thousand that we missed, but we had to do the whole forty.
Maybe it was one of the, surely forty thousand.
Yeah, we had to do the whole forty, because we started at zero.
And this is the, that you get the grant that reimbursed some of the stay for.
Yes.
Some of the.
Two, two grant one.
Yes, yeah, for a total of forty, yes. This was for.
For how many?
The total was forty thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-two cents.
But before it was thirty-four or something like that, is what you're saying?
Well, it was, the jail essential grant program was sitting at zero. Um, we had to do the budget amendment to make the whole forty. We only received it in thirty-three something, but we had to do the whole budget amendment to make the whole amount there.
For last year?
That's too long. I just.
Forty thousand.
I'm just still a little bit confused, but I, would you explain it one more time to?
I mean, I really don't know how else to.
Well, I don't know how either, because I don't understand what you're saying.
We received funds in July that we did not budget for. We missed receiving it in. So when we went back to receive it, we had to do a budget amendment to make the full amount.
And there was two different ones, but they both added together, bring up a forty.
Yes, sir.
Make the motion and approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Underlying discussing act on approval on menu contract with IT for outsourcing support services.
So Ms. Bonnie had me provide you guys with the current contract that we're under, and it's in the back. So we do have a contract with them right now where they give us about five hours of support. Um, and it's around five hundred dollars a month. But with the new contract, this is going to be them coming in and pretty much taking over everything Sean was doing. So this will be an amendment to our current contract. Um, there is a one time upfront cost. You'll see on there, it's eleven thousand, six hundred dollars. That's going to be to obtain all the necessary passwords, get access to everything they need. Um.
Hold it. We've already got to pay it for it, right?
IT enable does not. They're going to have to come in and just pretty much redo all of the passwords, the, um, contact information. Um, the support team's going to have to be able to remote in and troubleshoot things. There's not going to be anyone here physically to do it. So they're going to have to come in and go through all of the systems and everything so that they can see where they stand and what all they're going to need to be able to do.
So what is the total for the year? Forty-three hundred and ten dollars a month besides that, twelve months?
Yes, so.
So what's the total figure?
So with eleven months, which is still remaining for the fiscal year, because we're already through October, it's going to be forty-seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. We do have the funds to cover all of this. It's an IT network budget. There's several different budget lines this will cover, plus remaining unused IT salary.
Do you know offhand what, uh, what we were paying with the IT guys here before versus, I mean, I know we used outsourcing a lot. And I, I, I bet we used more than five hours, was that a week you said?
Uh, I don't have a total number on that. I mean, we'd have to pull the, we'd have to pull some invoices and different things to see kind of where we were on that.
So is there, is there different companies that we, we look at, or is this the only company we can go with?
I think with us already being contracted with them, this is just an amendment, but this would be something next budget year that we would probably maybe want to send proposals out for or something. If you wanted to do something different, um, as long as it's under the hundred thousand, we don't have to do bids for it, but we could send out proposals next budget year and maybe look at other companies.
So you're saying we already got this contract to put in place with them?
Yes.
But, but if you have five of them, go ahead.
It's not the same. I mean, so from what I understand, even with Sean, Sean was still using this IT network to help.
Yes, he was outsourcing to them.
So I mean, the agreement contract we have with him right now was just for the purposes of helping Sean. We're not married to him. We can go to that, you know? And if they're not going to come here and it's all going to be remote.
They are going to.
The world's our oyster. We can ask for anything.
They are going to send someone from the Lufkin office to come in and kind of look through everything and all that. It won't be completely remote. And they can send someone from the Lufkin office if we need a person, you know, to come here and actually help us do some things. They will be able to send someone.
So we've already got a contract, by the way. If we stay with the same contract we got and do a little research, find out how much help we're going to need. Uh, that's not outlined, is it?
I, I, I think we're off the table with the same and wait, we get more information. I mean, stay with our regular contract.
Well, that's kind of what I was saying in the press, but I make that into form of a motion.
That's the page.
I, I'm not saying I don't dis, I don't disagree with it at all. What if, what happens in place like we do over that five hours, what happens? Like say, if something happens this week, will we have to?
They still help us.
It will still help, and it's going to cost about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty dollars plus, plus their mileage, mileage per hour if we.
If it comes to your, your logos in, what happens?
Um.
Just hourly rate.
Yes, it's the hourly rate.
Well, it still would cost that if we exceed the five hours a month, hundred cent five dollars an hour.
Well, that's if we don't enter this new contract.
What do you, what do you have to work? So your motion is to, to table.
Take this right now and give somebody smarter, make it bigger this time.
What if we do all that, keep this in place, and we use this temporarily and then do what Colton said, we're not married to this contract. What if we reach out to other companies?
See what the best deal is.
Yeah.
Well, because the, the thing of this would be advised.
Uh, well, is there something about the county website being less than fifty pages where we're going to get charged more, Lisa? Remember that? Wasn't Sean supposed to be getting down on the pages because the county website's getting charges? Part of that work quoted in here, I just saw was complete website edits to get down to less than fifty pages.
People, the different departments have been screenwinding their own apartments now, taking out unnecessary pages and then telling them to take them out. That's all going to be done before Sierra goes on and does the modifications of the ADA. So that's something that's still be looked at with what we're talking about with the people in each department can still be looking at their website pages and saying, what's unnecessary, getting those things straightened out.
With the new federal and state laws, our website does have to be compliant with seeing and hearing disabilities, so they're going to assist.
Yeah, but we've let Tom do that because we're under legal population. So where Bonnie thought it was going to be, we were going to be having it, having it done by this year, we don't, we have an extension until, and further more in the next year. So Sierra, that we, that Sierra, they actually do it, they've got people that they'll suggest for us to do it. But they said, when they looked at our website, that was, they were the people that said, you also bring, you need to pare down. We've got more pages than anybody else in the state. So that's why everybody, the partners are all going through, looking at their pages and telling them to take it off, or telling Sean to take it off. So it can still be done with whoever you guys, if you put bids out there, the people that take the bids can still do that. And we have time.
But we do have a contract in place now.
But that's.
It's not like we just don't have anything. And, and I, 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 I just look into this a little more. All of us.
You got a motion on the floor, Judge.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, um, please, when, uh, Sean and Bonnie both are already together, please turn this discussion.
Uh, as far as I know, we have gotten, uh, laptops back, yes. But other than that, I can't speak from Bonnie's part. Our retirement date is November thirtieth, so.
Have they turned in all the pass codes and the stuff for y'all to get into the?
We have been moving things over with new pass codes. We don't use current pass codes.
I mean, I think what I was trying to say is like, when Sean lives, we're running into, uh, the county Facebook page. He's only one of the administrator. We haven't, we haven't moved that over yet, so we've got to try to get a hold of him.
We're going to get a hold of IT. IT has the support.
So your office is, she has given y'all access to everything. Y'all can go in and change passwords when she, when her last day is, y'all can transfer.
That's a fine question.
But Sean's last day is already happened.
Yes.
And he didn't pass over the special administration stuff?
They don't need to IT enable because they, they are our five hour.
He gave out the new IT.
Because they have to be able to get into it.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Why would he do it to, for somebody at the camp? That's where he grabs his money from.
I, I wasn't stating that the fifty pages are on the website was the reason to hire the company in the longer term contract. I was more upset that it wasn't done before he left. That's why I said, why I said that.
Okay, it all worked out fine with us.
Okay, number ten. Discussing possible action on selecting a grant administrator service provider.
Carry on.
Go ahead.
Um, a few weeks ago, um, we put out notice and we got in, uh, applications for our grants administrator for the, uh, Glow Grant, the one where they have funds that they're reallocating. And so we wanted to apply for it. Um, Tommy and.
Yeah, that's the one I mentioned to y'all last quarter.
Or, yes, that on.
I sat on the committee, so I want to sit out, let y'all decide. The committee, the committee's making a suggestion to y'all who, who, who wanted, who wanted, uh, I guess the grant to stay.
Can, can you refresh our memory, what you?
Yeah, she got, you got.
Langford is to.
We got a request from, uh, Langford and, and we got one from Grant Works. And we reviewed experience, the work performance, uh, capacity performance, affirmative action, proposed fees, um, the totals. And, um, the final score, um, on Langford was one hundred, on Grant Works was nine, ninety-five. And then the recommendation from the team was to go with Langford and Associates. So we brought it to the commissioners to look at. And if y'all approve that, then there is a reservation that, um, would need to be signed today. We'll contact them and let them know. And they will be meeting with us to see how we want to proceed and what we want to proceed here.
I, I remember you bringing the gray cheeks to us and y'all's recommendation was Langford.
And Langford was the highest score.
Yes.
Well, I make a motion, we go with Langford.
I'll second. All in favor?
Yeah, well, I sat on the committee, so I.
Aye.
I was like, uh.
These are the way right of the altar.
Yeah.
With the Texas.
Number eleven, discuss possible action on selecting an engineering service provider designed for a project for the general land office, G L O two oh two four, C B, no, C D, B G, D R, local committee program.
Same thing here. I sat on that committee as well. Just you can tell us who another.
Yes, um, we had, again, two applications, um, Merrill and Doschett. Um, Merrill and Doschett. Um, we looked at, they're very similar in comparison with engineers. We looked for the ones that we knew as the committee, they knew exactly what we were looking for. So when they were going through the engineering, they're looking at firms who can match some of the things that we're going to be needing for our county that they have been successful with managing and doing. And so the committee, um, went with, uh, the barrel. And, um, that's the one that they're recommending before the county to consider.
So move. Second. All in.
Have, have they worked in, or Trinity?
Yes.
They worked in Trinity.
Yes.
We talked to, um, the, they, the committee, we talked to Jennifer earlier and she remembered them. Cause they had, they had said that Trinity listed on their package.
Where they at?
Conrad area. Well, they have several offices around.
And the other engineer was way downtown, you know, would be better closer if he knows customer service if something happened.
Everybody's over.
No, we haven't moved it. I had some questions in the front.
This, uh, part of, part of this, uh, the first, uh, the, the grant makes you hire an engineer to do some of the work. So that's what this second.
Yes, I made the motion, get second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Beckett. Thank you, Ms. Vicki. Discussing act of insurance partner acceptance of donation of a thousand dollars from CJR Services for purchase of the taster.
I think we must make it through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The CJR Services, uh, they, they really go a lot, I mean, they moved it a few years back, and they've really stepped in, and done a lot, a lot of good for lots of years.
Number thirteen, discussing act on county election ballot, trendy county appraisal board direction.
Just last month, we, uh, we nominated Jason Do, because Ivy Evans is withdrawn or retiring off that board, and, uh, I see he's on here, so I, I'd make a motion that we split our votes equally between the five, being James Do, uh, Jason Do, Bonnie Hutton, Danny Martin, and Kevin Searson. Is that all right, is that right?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number fourteen, discussing act on extending the insurance coverage, and we decided we was gonna table that, so I'm on table fourteen.
Did that fall in the motion? Move, so move.
Second.
And in the meantime, you reach out to Tac and get a quote for it?
Yeah.
Yes. I don't want it to go away, I want, I want it to go away.
You should be able to have something by the next doctor. Anyway, get that outside insurance company business, or coverage, like you...
And while, while we're doing that, we need to find out that we're doing a Pennington, and the Fox Station, and the Friday Community Center. Go ahead and check on the background out here, with what it's gonna cost, do it every day. How about County Barn? Well, we got, we got county...
Those are already covered.
We're covered, that's in liability, that's...
County employees.
So, let me just tell something out here, when we have the cleanup days and stuff like that, we've never had nobody get hurt, but if somebody, would we be covered there or not? Rebecca, that's part of your...
Some of the county barns, so if they like, if in the petition, they, they accuse the, the probationer, probationee of doing something that caused the damage, you know, but they don't, they don't operate heavy machinery or anything like that, they're just kinda...
Sometimes you grab some of that trash, or the gravel, stuff squirts out of it, so you don't know what's in there.
Well, that'd be y'all's employees grabbing, and they'd be covered, but there's...
But what if you wanted a probationer, got hurt, I want him in prison. What, did y'all have some inmates under it?
Well, so, look, it's, it's, it's not if the probationers get hurt, if the probationers get hurt, then they would sue the county, and then the county insurance would kick in, that's what we're talking about. But if someone said that the probationer injured them, you know, would they be covered, which I don't think we're too worried about that, you know, I think, but the boards that manages these county-owned buildings, I think they do need to be covered, because I'm kind of trusting them with the other people there. So I think, I think we're looking at everything, but I think we're okay with kinda where we're at.
You, you know, in a jail, if, if an inmate, he, he's not employed, but if he gets hurt, they're covered in general liability underneath that, I mean...
Listen, we're kinda meshing two things together, you know, is it, you know, what, could they sue the insurance to recover damages? And will the insurance defend somebody that was, you know, doing the county's business? So I think, I think we got it, and we'll dig into it and give y'all some options as best we can.
Thank you.
Number fifteen. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Number sixteen, discussing act of resolution from Texas Department Agricultural for Texas, Feeding Texans Home Delivery Meals Grant Program. Sixteen, that's your Ms. Vicki, your...
Uh, that's, that's gonna be the, uh, dead dog deal.
We need some clarity, I'm sorry, for just a minute, I know she's asking questions about number fifteen. Discussing act on having board members of organizations sign for lease of the liability.
So, uh, Trez's office talked to me about that, and was it Tac that requested it? Tac requested that the board members sign a lease of liability, you know, to not hold the county liable for any damages, just kind of courtesy. Kinda after the firework thing is what prompted this, when they were, you know, hurt by fireworks at the Y. It's kind of a nice thing to do this all at once, you know, instead of just asking for them to take, you know, the brunt of both sides, you know, if we cover them, I do think it's the right thing to do, that they would, you know, agree not to hold the county liable. Just a release of liability, it will draw up, it will present to each board.
You'll, you'll do that?
Yes, I think we have.
We'll do it after we find out.
I think we should do everything again.
You're all in agreement? Okay, I make that, uh, I guess you need a motion to...
Table it, table it.
Table it till, till it gets drawn up.
Second. Number sixteen, discussing... All in favor?
Aye.
Number sixteen, discussing act of old resolution for Texas Department Agriculture for Texans, Feeding Texans.
Judge, I believe that's gonna be the, uh, senior citizens deal, and, and yesterday I came through Trinity, and, and they had a barbecue deal set up down there, trying to raise funds for that in Trinity, and I hear nothing but good about that place. And I have eaten there a few times myself, I think the judge, uh, Noss has been eating there quite a bit, it's good, it's good food, and they're... They got a lot of people going there, so I make a motion, we, uh, yeah, with this resolution, make motion approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Just before we dismiss, I would like to thank everybody that showed support to my family here, my mom's passing, the Texas Methodist, the cause, and the people that showed up to the funeral. Our family would greatly appreciate it.
On the other hand, I'd like to thank all of them that showed up here, and my sisters, here in Rowan, I appreciate everything there, too.
I think the motion will be adjourned.
All in favor?